Welcome to the March 9th Penfield Board of Education meeting. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time it would be appropriate for the board to approve the March 9th 2021 agenda as submitted, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda of March 9th 2021 as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So I'd also like to take this time to mention that Dr. Putnam is not with us in the room right now. He has been notified by the Monroe County Department of Health that he has to quarantine due to contact tracing. He does not have any signs of infection and is feeling fine, and we have arranged to have him provide his report remotely. Okay, we'd like to have the board approve the consent agenda, including the approval of the minutes of the February 23rd 2021 meeting as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee of Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee of Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, the request to approve the recommended bidder VP supply Maynard's Electric per the RFP for LED lighting, the request to approve the recommended bidder magazine subscriptions services for magazines for the period of 5/21, 5/121 through 4/3022. So may I have a motion, a second, that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. There's no treasurer or special reports, and we now come to the student representative report. So Abby?
Hello, everybody. It is that time again. To start things off, at Penfield High School, several of the PHS music groups have produced digital renditions of songs that have been played throughout the year. These groups include the PHS Philharmonia, Senior String Students, and the PHS Symphony Orchestra. The girls lacrosse team has begun preseason practices and are aiming for a successful season, fingers crossed, and there are many exciting events planned for this year's graduating class, something I am particularly excited for. And at Skriebner, many generous and greatly appreciated donations were received from the Skriebner community for the Cameron Community Ministries. At Indian Landing, two kindergarteners won a bracelet and a T-shirt for being awarded Partner's Pride. My brother attends Indian Landing, and when he won Partner's Pride, he was ecstatic, so I can only imagine how they're feeling.
That's nice.
At Harris Hill, students had their very first live book selection, and from the picture you could tell that they were very excited. And Mr. Playfair's class reviewed ELA skills in a Jeopardy format where there was laughter and learning in action. At Bay Trail, a group of sixth grade percussionists played a song that was featured online, and I just wanted to note that all of the groups, the music groups that I've mentioned so far, have been doing a very, a very great job this school year. And at Cobble's, the Cobble's PTA sponsored a food truck for the Cobble staff. And lastly, for district-wide news, March is Women's History Month, and schools are busy learning about women across the world who have been change-makers. This month is also Music in Our Schools Month, and schools throughout the district are celebrating in different ways. And lastly, Penfield schools are celebrating Inclusion Week that lasts from March 8th until the 12th, where students can engage in a variety of activities throughout the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Any questions for Abby? Thank you. And now it's visitor speaking time. The Penfield, let's see, one second. The Penfield Board of Education welcomes and encourages residents to share their questions, comments, and concerns during visitor speaking time at our meetings. At our last meeting, we had a large number of residents requested to speak. To accommodate all the speakers while still aligning time for our agenda, the speaking time was modified from three minutes to, from five minutes to three minutes. Due to the challenges presented, we have made some changes to ensure that all residents who wish to speak can be heard. Specifically, we are starting our meetings 30 minutes earlier in order to allow for a longer visitor speaking time. We appreciate your patience and hopes that this dedicated time will meet the needs of all those who wish to speak. Thank you. Do we have any?
One more. She's number nine.
Oh, she, after all these, so she'll be coming in.
Yep.
Okay. So, this visitor speaking time is designated for district residents to bring their comments to the board. The board encourages residents to share their opinions, voice their concerns, and offer suggestions in a constructive atmosphere. Matters involving particular individuals or specifics in negotiation are not permitted during public session and should be addressed privately with the board president or superintendent. Comments brought to the board will be taken under consideration, however, this is not the time when the board can answer questions or engage in dialogue. A request form, to speak form must be filled out prior to the start of the meeting and given to the district clerk. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit the total amount of visitor speaking time based on the length of the agenda. Written communications, as always, are encouraged. First is Jessica O'Connor. Hello, Ms. O'Connor. Please state your name and address.
Hi. Can, oh, there we go. My name is Jessica O'Connor. I live at 33 Hall Brook Drive. I spoke with you guys about a month ago and then have emailed you as well, giving suggestions and different, you know, strategies and data that we have about reopening. I've also sat through the meetings here last week, and just to make a few comments about the meeting and how it went, it was, what I saw was a lot of hurting people, a lot of really passionate people, frustrated people. I saw students that took all of their bravery and got up here and spoke to you, begging you really, you know, as, as your, their elective representatives to, to help them, to help them, you know, get back in school. And I think there was a callousness that, that people felt, and I understand a lot of that has to do with the way board meetings are supposed to be run, but these are not conventional times. This is not what board meetings usually look like. You usually sit up here and talk to each other. So, you know, it just maybe some different kind of energy or acknowledgement might have been helpful, I think, to parents feeling like they were heard. The board meeting continuing on with joking and banter about rooftop gardens, you know, that, that was hard for parents, I think, to see, who are here because of the passion that they feel and the pain that they feel. I also want to talk just briefly to the idea that there are a group of people here tonight, from what I understand, that are here to oppose those of us who do believe that schools should reopen full-time, that they were encouraged by the district to do so. Just a statement, you know, on behalf of the group and on behalf of myself, to my knowledge, nobody in this group has ever said anything detrimental about, you know, virtual learning. If anything, we perfectly respect the fact that people have the right to stay home if that's what they, you know, if they want to do, if that's what they feel safe doing. But this pitting groups of parents against each other is, is really damaging, I think, and distracting from the goal, which is that we should all be working on, you know, to get these kids back to school and, and to serve, you know, all of our children. So I just wanted to make a comment about that. So, pretty much, I feel like, without a doubt, we have been able to, with all this exhaustive research, come to the conclusion that it really does seem to be within your power to reopen schools. And I know you guys don't agree because you continue to put out that it has to be something, you have to wait for guidance, wait for guidance, but the state has even said that it isn't within the local authority to do so. And they said that the locality, the county, can step in if they so choose, but in a recent media interview, they said they don't have to do that. If they, if they want to step back, it's up to the districts. We had Dr. Mendoza on a legislator meeting on the February 22nd for two hours being interviewed, and in his interview, he said, "It is not up to me to decide. I am an advisor." If these schools wanted to put together a plan with three feet in barriers that is entirely within their will or ability to do so. So if him stepping back with the state saying it is within the locality, I guess it's just very, very confusing to those of us that don't understand why you don't feel you have the power as board members to direct the district to reopen, under the safe guidelines. So, that is, I guess, something we would love to get a little bit more information from you on. On behalf of the group, I was asked to present to you all, and I'll give these to Sharon, with, we were able to, excuse me, able to compile some stories of how people in Penfield, the mental health crisis in Penfield, how that's going for people, not in the United States, not in New York, but here in Penfield, what their children are experiencing. And within 24 hours, we had 100 responses. Thank you to the group of virtual parents that responded that their kids are doing great, and that's wonderful. This is not meant to, you know, bring down that, that experience or minimize it in any way. We know a lot of kids are doing great, but unfortunately, a lot of kids aren't. And keep in mind that, like, the focus of the last year has been health and safety, right? Keeping people alive. And luckily, we've succeeded at that. Monroe County has not had one single death under the age of 30 in a year. That's incredible. That's great news. But, mental health, we are on the brink of a crisis. There are parents here that are going to read some of these stories to you, and they're all compiled here. We do not have time to read them, it's 15 pages. We're on the brink of a crisis. We had a crisis here in Penfield a few years ago with the suicides, and then we started to become a leader in mental health and social emotional health here in this, in this district. It would be a tragedy, tragedy, for that to happen again. And I think if you hear some of this stuff, if you could just take it through that lens, it's dire. It's getting to that point that these kids, they need to be back in school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Next up is Matthew Gilbert. Hello, Mr. Gilbert. Please state your name and address.
It's Matthew Gilbert, 100 Farm Brook Drive. Several, last several meetings, you've heard from many persuasive speakers that I agree with that have spoken about the need to return to five days a week schooling, and it sounds like you'll hear from many more tonight. And those reasons were social, emotional, educational. I'm going to take a, a little bit of a different tack tonight, my comments to you tonight, and I'm going to talk about two subjects I think everyone enjoys, math and risk tolerance. I think our risk tolerance is too low in this subject of five days a week, and I know that seems counterintuitive because the risk we're talking about is toward our most precious resource, our children, but it is too low in this subject. Every day, every parent takes a small amount of risk with their own lives and their children's lives, whether that subject is, when should I get rid of the booster seat and let them sit without it? When should I take the training wheels off? You know, should I drive into school, let them ride the bus, let them get a driver's license, go out in the world? But we do that because they need to live their lives. All of you took a small risk tonight and do it every day to get here. You drove here. Automobiles are dangerous. At least 35,000 Americans die every year in an automobile, 35,000 or more. About 4,000 of those are children, and those are tragedies. Not only that, but millions of people are injured every year in automobile accidents. Yet, knowing that information and me sharing with you tonight, all of you will drive home and not change your habits, and all of you will drive home tomorrow. Why? Because you have to live your life. School is a part of life. Our children need to go back to school five days a week, and the risk is incredibly low to them to do so. Some numbers I'd like to share with you tonight, I know nobody likes math, but I'm going to share it with you anyway. There are 74 million children, children defined by people under the age of 18, 74 million Americans under the age of 18. Since the pandemic started, 35,000 of them have died, and each one of those is a tragedy. But they didn't die from COVID. They died from all sorts of things that can happen to us in life that all of us risk every day when we walk out the door. Choking, falling down the stairs, automobile accidents, but 35,000 children died last year. How many died of COVID? According to CDC, 204. Again, I do not try to minimize or trivialize those deaths. Those are tragedies for every family, but it's 204 out of 74 million. What is the risk to a child if they contract COVID and tested positive? What is their survival rate? That's not of all children. That's the children who actually contract COVID, get tested, because we know most kids are asymptomatic, get tested, tested positive, and then when they do test positive, their survival rate is 99.96%. Jessica mentioned a moment ago that I believe no one has died under 30 in Monroe County. The risk is low. It's very low. It is time for our children, for all this, again, social, emotional, educational reasons that everyone's going to mention tonight, to return to five days a week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Next up is Joe Smith. Hello, Mr. Smith. Please name, your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Joe Smith, 2172 Five Mile Line, and I'm the father of three girls who attend elementary school in Penfield. Why do we wear masks? It's not only to protect ourselves, but rather to protect those around us. Additionally, the adoption of masks was not instituted to protect or serve a subset of our population, but really the entire community. As a school board, you are asked to take into consideration all of the members of our community, not just the ones who speak the loudest. My wife and I made the incredibly difficult decision to have the girls engage in the remote learning curriculum due to a myriad of reasons, and I would like to express my views on the potential five-day return to school. If nothing else, I would like you to take away these three points in my three minutes. Mental well-being is not defined by children returning to school full-time. There is still a lot we don't know. And number three, the distributed survey will not provide accurate results for your review. First, mental health well-being is not defined by children returning to school. I've heard many parents and even the school claim that returning to school full-time is good news. Please be aware that for many children and families, this is highly anxiety-inducing. The news that children could be transferred to a new teacher after 30 weeks with their current teacher, particularly with elementary school students, seems at odds with the goals of providing consistent emotional and educational support. This significant disruption will lead to an adjustment period, and without the bonds that they have formed in the past five months, children and teachers alike will not be maximizing their emotional or educational potential. Two, there's still a lot we don't know. I do believe in science. I believe in the recent reports indicate a distance of three feet with masks may be adequate. I also believe the other published studies that show that proper guidelines are followed were all safe. You'll hear those studies referred to multiple times this evening, however, please be aware that there are other peer-reviewed scientific studies that indicate a giant flag of caution. CDC study in Mississippi found that the number of kids infected with COVID-19 was much higher than the testing reported. It was not a matter of lower infection, just lower reported numbers. The B.117 variant, which has been shown to dominate the pediatric population in Sweden. And then studies by the UK Sage Group have shown that kids are more likely to bring the virus into households, so as though they are not subject to their, the same effects, they're bringing it home. With just 11% of our population in Monroe County receiving both doses of the vaccine, region is far below the required for herd immunity. The school has an obligation to consider their role in the community and allow families this opportunity to receive the vaccine before committing to opening schools again full-time. And then the survey that was sent out, the short three-question survey is really geared towards people who really want to return to school and who really don't want to return to school. The survey does not represent probably the majority of families who recognize this as a much more complex decision. I do not feel that I can truthfully answer the survey until I know the true options. Will we have the same teacher? What will pick-up drop-off look like? How many students are in a classroom? This information is required in order to make an informed decision about what we want to do with our children. Given the immense undertaking to open the schools this past fall, I can't comprehend how we can open our schools in a thoughtful and intentional manner in just five weeks. Administrators continue to solve daily concerns, and teachers continue to do amazing work. Restructuring the school and classrooms will disrupt everything that people have built, and for what? Maybe 10 weeks of disorganized, nonproductive school with everyone present behind barriers? In conclusion, I just ask that the board thoughtfully consider every child in our community and the impact that the disruption would have on their learning and emotional well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next up, for me, is, it's either Cindy Leece or Leers. Could you state your name and address, please?
Dr. Putnam, board members, parents, and community. My name is Cindy Leece. I live at 11 Leonard Crescent. I've been a Penfield resident for 13 years. My husband has been a resident of Penfield for most of his life. This school district was definitely a factor in our home purchase. My 10th grader and 7th grader have never known another school district. Up until this last year, we have been mostly very happy with the district and the services my children have received here in Penfield. I don't like getting up here and speaking, but I cannot sit by and just hope that things will get better. This year, my children, who have been very loyal to the district, have been willing to consider moving to other school districts, and they have also considered attending private school. This is not their parents forcing them. They are tired of not receiving enough instruction and support from teachers. They are tired of receiving little instruction in new math concepts and searching for understanding on websites they can find via Google. They are tired of finally figuring out where to find their assignments and then teaching themselves at times the assignments to try and submit it and find that it doesn't go through on the platform, and then having to go back and forth via email with a teacher trying to figure out what their next step is. As a parent, I worry about how this lack of instruction that my children have received this year will affect their next level of learning, high school for my one son and college for the other. I've heard reviews from parents in other districts that have synchronous learning on their virtual days. They are reporting better outcomes to me with their children, but we have not been given that option here in Penfield. I also worry about the lack of routine and structure that my children have had this past year, and these all tie into one of my biggest concerns, my children's wavering motivation to work hard and be successful in school. I won't even get into social and emotional things they've struggled with this past year, and it's definitely affected one child more than the others, but as parents, we've been working very diligently to find ways to fill these holes that actions that have been made in government and schools have, have filled my children with. But parents aren't teachers of multiple subjects, and we're not teachers of different grade levels, and so how do we move forward in education? How do we do better for our kids? Something needs to change, and soon. If the Penfield School District hopes to redeem their previous excellent reputation and keep members of the community here and attending district schools, now is the time to bring our children back to school fully, five days a week, in person with their peers. I believe our children have suffered enough.
Thank you, Ms. Leece. Next up is Olivia Daven. Hello, Ms. Daven. Please state your name and address.
Hi. Olivia Daven, 56 Random Knolls Drive. Just want to say thank you very much for increasing back to five minutes. I think I can speak for everyone. I say it's much appreciated. As Jessica said, I'm going to read a couple of the extracts from the, the survey that was given to some parents about their children's mental health. So this is from the parent of a 6th grader. He is depressed. He isolates himself in his bedroom. He has meltdowns and is now hypersensitive. He doesn't even want to watch movies with his family and rarely even wants to play games. He just wants to sit on his electronics by himself, as being by himself on an electronic is all he knows during his last school year. He's already on the autism spectrum. He has sensory issues and has totally regressed and is uninterested in any type of play other than an electronic, as this is the new norm. He doesn't even want to be touched or hugged anymore and breaks down if the matter is pushed. This is from a 10th grader, parent of a 10th grader, I apologize. My student started suffering from depression around September. I had been very challenged to get him mental health support as the doctors are overwhelmed. By November, we finally had treatment. By then, he was completely suicidal. We watch our child day and night to keep him safe. This resulting depression, according to three different mental health professionals, is a result of the changes in life due to no school. He was formerly a high honor roll student and varsity athlete. He can barely get out of bed in the morning now. I see my child's bright future circling the drain every day that school continues to remain closed. My child attends counseling and takes medication, both begun after hybrid school began. This is again from a parent of a 6th grader. She is sad and does not want to go to school. Hybrid robbed her of the new 6th grade experience, setting up lockers, lunch with friends. She cries every week before in-person school, says how much she hates it. Academically, there's no live instruction. Communication is an issue with students or parents. I'm not sure she's learning anything. And finally, I'm going to read something from a parent of a 7th grader. Went from a happy, vibrant social kid to always being sad, lacks confidence in who she is, which she never did. She's constantly questioning herself academically. She was never a good tester and feels this is how all her grades are now being determined. She is now, in her words, "So dumb and doesn't know anything." She has begun counseling since hybrid school has begun. And now, these are some of my words. I am not the stereotypical quiet, timid British person that you see in certain American movies, the Hugh Grant, if you will. I'm outspoken, and I feel very passionate that these children should be back in school full-time and now. It's time, guys. It's been time for a while. I can't speak for every parent at Penfield schools by any means, but I know that I speak for a great many when I say that it feels like, at this point, you are actively trying to think of excuses why these children cannot and should not go back to school. Science, science, empirical evidence, annual peers in the media, in medicine, and now even government are stating otherwise. Instead, I'm afraid I feel like you are blatantly encouraging divisiveness between parents who want their kids full-time in person in school and then the virtual parents, but I just feel like surely we can accommodate both. As the gentleman said, he's concerned that his daughters should not go back to in-person school. Keep them at home. Like, it just doesn't, I just, yeah. I used to be really proud, bragging rights almost, that we lived in the esteemed Penfield School District, and I'm now a little bit embarrassed. My husband and I are at our wit's ends. We're done. We put our house on the market yesterday, the house that my children were born in. However, and possibly a little unfortunately for you, I will keep fighting for a cause I believe in regardless of whether my children will attend your district in the fall. I'm bored and sick of calling private schools in the area that we will probably really struggle to afford and have them tell me, "Oh, you're calling from Penfield." Yeah, you're the third parent today to call from that district to try and get a place. I know several, if not all of you board members are parents, so this will not surprise you to hear. There is no love like the love a parent has for their child. There is no fight that we will not fight for our children and their rights and their education or lack thereof. So please, I implore you, be prepared for that and do right by them. We cannot and should not be silenced. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Daven. Next up is Lisa Polvino. Hello, Ms. Polvino. Please state your name and address.
Lisa Polvino, 2175 My Line Road. I was here at the last meeting, and I was here at the last meeting, and the thing that has stuck in my head since that meeting is the mention of the 31% increase in mental health pediatric ED visits in children 5 to 17. I can't shake it. It's, that is a crazy number. That's since April. That number, even if you go back to the beginning of this in March 2020, it's not matched by anything, not by infection rates, not by deaths, not by hospitalizations, and definitely not by anything going on in the schools. So I guess what I can't figure out is, how is the mental health and safety of our students being prioritized? I keep hearing over and over, you are asking for reopening guidance, you're waiting to hear, you need to know what you can do, but you're the mental health and educational experts here, so I don't understand why you're not demanding it. I don't understand why you're not joining with other Monroe County District administrations and fighting as unified force, and I don't understand why you're not working with the parents and students in the community to advocate. I don't understand how you can continue to wait while so many kids are suffering. You've heard from parents, you heard from students. I don't know if students will talk today, but the students last, at the last meeting were so powerful. They're struggling and they need you to help them. In the fall, my, both of my kids, I have a sophomore and a senior, they both played soccer. I mean, 90% of those kids were without masks. Kids are wrestling now without masks. So I'm 100% for this, for families and kids having that choice, but I don't understand if they can do that, why they can't also have the choice to sit in a class three feet apart with masks on, why they can't sing, perform, and attend after-school activities. I'd like to see you guys fight and advocate for common sense in these kids, and I know none of this is easy or simple. I know what a huge task it is, but it's possible, and we know that because there are so many schools open five days a week for in-person instruction. I mean, we'd just like to see you guys working with us and helping us because these kids are in crisis. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. LaRue, please state your name and address.
Jonathan LaRue, 64 Woodhaven Drive. I am new both to the district and this, and the proud father of a kindergartner who has had an absolutely fantastic year, you know, two days that she's allowed to be in school. She's learned how to read. She read me a book yesterday. It was a very, very powerful moment. I do wonder, though, how much further along she might be were she to go five days. The way she reacts, the way she comes home, it's pretty clearly different. I have a background in economics, and my way I see the world tends to be informed by diminishing returns and cost-benefit analysis, and I think we've heard a lot of the costs. I also think that there's been sort of evolving information and data on how does this school, you know, spread happen with COVID? And I think initially, it was a very rational reaction to say, lots of kids, one place, super-spreader place. I think that has been pretty clearly, you know, that is not the case. There's some new data out that was highlighted by the New York Daily News Today, where they took a look in New York City at Mayor de Blasio's request, and the incidence that they found of people that tested positive in school, the in-school spread was virtually nonexistent. So in-school spread with kids, obviously, very low. You know, we had data out of Spain, which does pretty, considerably better contract tracing than we do, as far back as last October, November, that suggested that of people that tested positive in a school, 87% of those people did not spread this disease to somewhere else. I think in light of that, it's worth reevaluating what the cost-benefit of keeping schools closed are, and I'm also concerned that there isn't already a plan in place. I mean, I think that evidence for, you know, the idea that we could potentially get to the point where we could safely reopen schools this year has been there throughout the entire school year, and I would implore you to maybe catch up on lost time and figure out a way to get that done, because I do think the costs are extensive, both to the community and to the kids.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue. Next is Kelly Bantus. Hello, Ms. Bantus, please state your name and address.
Good evening, and it's Bartus, but it's probably my handwriting, though, so.
My apologies.
B-A-R-T-U-S. So I'm going to continue with some of the stories of mental health and struggles that we've compiled from the families here in Penfield. First is a story from a 6th grade parent. She says her son cries the night before school every week. He tells me school gives him a bad feeling. He's a kid that loved school always. He really did. It breaks my heart. In school, he is done okay grade-wise, however, he often tells me he really doesn't understand the concepts being presented. Another parent of a 7th grader wrote in that he is isolated and he is depressed. He goes to school two days a week with no scheduled classes the other three. He has an IEP, and Penfield refused to put him in four days after multiple requests. He has one Zoom on Fridays with his aide just to see if he got his assignments done. He has lost interest in school. Sadly, he won't even shower. He doesn't want to do anything other than play online games. He is depressed and wants to stay in bed most of the time. And I just want to say, so many parents describe their kids wanting to stay in bed. Can you imagine? 7th graders, 9th graders, kindergartners wanting to stay in bed? This is a 4th grade parent. After six months of being in hybrid, she constantly says, "I'm stupid. I can't learn online. I don't know how to do anything." There are constant tears and frustration. She says she is always sad, but she doesn't know why. She is in counseling now, which has begun as a result of the hybrid school. Academically, she has learned nothing. She hasn't developed the skills of self-teach or self-discipline. She is nine. She is so distracted with her sister being on a different school schedule and her parents alternating, working from home. Here is a parent who wrote in about their 3rd grade daughter. My daughter is very behind. We try to work on things at home, but she gets frustrated, and we don't want to add to her stress. She hates virtual days, pleads with us to just send her to school. She has begun counseling since hybrid school has begun and has been diagnosed with severe anxiety, OCD, during hybrid school. She's repeating the same word over and over, is constantly anxious about everything. Her pediatrician told us that child psychologists are very hard to get in with right now. We are at a loss, but this current situation has broken our eight-year-old girl. 6th grader. This child is isolating his feelings. He is isolating himself in his room. I know he feels left out, but he's not even expressing it to us. He is completely disinterested in the academics of the school year, not motivated to really do anything that he used to love, including sports. He has gained weight, which is also depressing him, I feel. A 9th grade parent wrote in. My daughter's mental health has been challenged greatly during the last 12 months. Because of it, she now sees a therapist via Zoom once a week. She has said she feels like she doesn't even know who she is anymore. She was a girl who thrived in school, as she was very social, loved relationships, loved her teachers and friends, and just loved going to school. She says she doesn't feel optimistic, she's not resilient, and she's in her head all the time. She zones out a lot, not able to concentrate, staring at a laptop all day, three days a week. She's feeling more destructive in her mindset when it comes to her self-esteem, and she second-guesses herself all the time. She gets very down not seeing her friends that she normally see at school, and it's scary as a parent to see how much this has affected her mental health. This 7th grade parent responded by saying that they have seen journal entries stating that her daughter wanted to kill herself because she missed her friends and was extremely lonely. She is far behind academically. She is now participating in new counseling since the pandemic, and in part, this is because of hybrid school. A 5th grade parent wrote in. We have seen an increase in my son's mood swings and increased irritability. He is desperately longing for social interaction with his friends, his own age. There is a drastic difference in his outlook and personality on the days that he is remote versus in-person. I am truly worried he is entering into a period of his life where peer socialization is critical to developing coping strategies. A 6th grade parent. Is that five minutes?
That's five minutes.
Well, as you can see, there's many more stories that deserve to be heard, but I think that you all are going to be getting a copy of the stories, so I hope that you'll read each one of them. Each one of them is heartbreaking. Thank you very much for your time.
And we, one more, Diane Barbara? Is, I'm not sure that's correct. Hello, and please state your name and address.
Diane Barbara Broome, 12 Penbrook Drive, Penfield, New York.
Mark, excuse me, I can't hear.
I'm sorry.
Could you ask her?
Get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Oh, to the, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, you could, I don't do this very often.
That's fine.
Okay, so you got my name and address, okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Just to give you the glimpse of what these children are doing every day, I volunteered to read some of these stories from some of these parents, and I'm one of them. This was sent in by the mother of a 9th grader. Once outgoing, energetic, and social, my daughter sits in bed most of the day now. A few months ago, I came home to find she had cut her long hair short with kitchen shears, out of boredom maybe. Then, only a few weeks ago, I came home to find she had given herself a tattoo with a sewing needle and pen ink. She has gone from being interested in participating and enjoying school and friends to being stressed out and withdrawn. She has gone from always having very good grades to barely passing her core subjects. She participates in counseling now and never did before the pandemic. This is a parent of a 7th grader. He's unmotivated, he cries at the drop of the hat, he's lonely, angry all the time, nothing makes him happy, and he rarely laughs or smiles anymore. He truly doesn't care about his work anymore and states that he's not learning in most classes, just going through the motions. School has ceased to be enjoyable, and he's completely disconnected in every way. Being in person was what kept him engaged, motivated, and accountable. Now he's none of those things. 6th grade parent. We have started counseling in October for sudden crying outbursts as well as depression. We are in the second med increase for depression and anxiety. This is an 8th grader. My son is trying to make the best of it, but I can see that he is mildly depressed and his spirit is so low. Academically, he's not doing well. He is basically self-taught for three of five days. He lacks motivation. I had to stop looking for a job because he needs me to sit next to him while he's doing his assignments for academic assistance to keep him company and to keep him motivated. From an 8th grade parent. My son has ADHD and ODD, and although he is on medication to help with this, it is difficult for him to sit and focus, especially at home. Since the start of hybrid learning, my son's interest in completing school has drastically declined. His grades are suffering and has a lack of interest in completing his assignments. He has gone from an A student to a C student. He is participating in new counseling since school closures began. 8th grader. She changed from happy and carefree to quiet and somber. She spends most free time alone in a room. She went from excellent grades with no issues getting work done to failing several classes and difficulty even getting started on assignments. Stress level is through the roof. This is from a parent, a 7th grader. He has lost social connections. His anxiety is much worse. He is sad and worried often. He has failed a class for the very first time ever. He has begun medication for his anxiety since full-time school ended. A 3rd grader. He did not have attention issues before going hybrid. He has been diagnosed with ADHD since going to hybrid learning and has begun new medication to deal with it. He cannot learn virtually. Just lastly, my own son, I miss school today because I can't get him out of bed. On his virtual days, he does not have to sign in until 10:30 a.m. Guess what time he gets up in the morning? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara, and thank you to all for sharing your stories with us. And it's, now it's time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam?
Thank you, Mr. Ellidge. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, I think, Dr. Driffl there, who's going to run the PowerPoint, which I can't see from home, so the first slide should say superintendent's reports. I do have just a few staff and student updates, and then some Penfield updates, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for the budget development updates. So before I, before I talk about the, well, I'll talk about the science grant first, so thank you, Dr. Driffl. And again, I just wanted to reference, Mr. Ellidge shared why I'm here on Zoom is that I am under quarantine due to contact tracing, so tested negative, as did my two children who are quarantined with me, but we will be, will be at home, I guess, until Friday. So thank you to the town, who we work with to do these presentations, and thank you, I know they spend a lot of time trying to figure out and troubleshoot how we could do this, so, so thank you. So science grant, congratulations to our Director of STEAM, Nicole Whitehead, and our science TOSA, Shane Waterson, on successfully applying for a Bosch Community Fund Grant for the elementary science program. This is the third year the district is receiving the grant. It's $7,500, and it will help purchase the district's subscription to Mystery Science along with supplies to create hands-on science kits for our students. These materials are valuable in a normal school year and even more now since they allow virtual students to have engaging, hands-on science experiences at home. So a lot of work goes into that grant, and thank you to Nicole and Shane for securing that for Penfield. We also have the DECA competition. This is one of our high school extracurricular activities, and the DECA business competition did take place virtually this year, and congratulations. I'm not going to read all of our students. They are on the agenda, they're on the slide, but we did have a number of students who placed in the top 10 at the state-level DECA competition, and we also had George Finter and Allison Morton, and they actually qualified for the national competition. And just a huge, so proud of all of these kids, and congratulations on DECA and the work they're doing through that club. Now I'll turn to some updates, and before I go to that first slide, I just wanted, Mark said thank you to the folks who were able to talk. Thank you very much. I'd also encourage anybody who isn't here to email. We read all of those emails, and I really do appreciate that and look forward to looking through the data that the, one of the speakers shared. So thank you very much, and we're going to talk through some of what we're doing internally around reopening. But the first slide has to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I just wanted to reference that, oh, are they not there? I'll, I'll talk through this slide as they're, as they're looking for it, but the district has been and continues to be committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we, perfect timing. We wanted to say thank you to a community organization known as the Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance, also known as PERA. We wanted to say thank you to a community organization known as the Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance, also known as PERA. Many members of our school teams and our Board of Education attended an open community town hall that they hosted virtually last week. It was very insightful, lots of discussions, and really informative from the district point of view, hearing from families and students from the PERA event prior to that one. The district is going to be creating and has been working on creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee with stakeholders, including board representation, parents and guardians, administrators, teachers, students, and possibly some community support. And so that Penfield Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is going to help guide the district initiatives. We have lots of work to do around curriculum, textbook, hiring, and professional development, and we will be partnering with that group. It'll be a district committee to work alongside with PERA and other families and staff and students who are interested in this work. So just wanted to say thank you to PERA for holding such an informative event. I know that is community-wide. They've got a website, a Facebook page, and I know they're planning on many more events. So I encourage the community to come involved with that. We'll go to the next slide, which is our continued advocacy and information gathering. So I just want to talk a little bit is, as a, as a district, we continue to advocate for updated metrics from the New York State Department of Health. And what we're using for our baseline as we push for this advocacy is our ongoing rapid testing that's taking place in the school. We're not finding staff or students. The number of positives we have is minuscule. We're seeing a decreasing infection rate in our community, the Finger Lakes region, and we're monitoring that with Dr. Mendoza. And then we have so many district-wide mitigation steps in place with hand washing and desk cleaning and distancing and cohorting. There's so much stuff that we're doing that really continues to support what many of the people said tonight, is that we are doing great things to keep our students and our staff safe. We're also, it's not on the slide, but we're also working very closely with the Department of Health to make sure that our staff who are interested have access to the vaccination. So we're not at 100% of staff members who are interested having had the opportunity, but we're getting, we're getting closer and closer by the, by the week. And so I think that is very, very helpful for our staff to feel comfortable as well. The recent survey that went out to families through Infinite Campus as well as K-12 students and staff through forms is really to help simply gauge stakeholder comfort levels with a full return. And I wanted to just mention that that is an initial where our comfort level is. I will, we will be sharing all that survey data next week because it closes on Friday. I can tell you that I think it's going to be overwhelmingly positive that people do want to get back into school. I also realize that, that the survey doesn't have all the detail that everybody wants or needs, and that's because we don't have, we don't have a plan finalized yet. So please understand that that survey is really that initial gauging of comfort level. And once we have finalized our plan on what we can do to do a full reopening this school year, that will be shared so people can make a more informed decision, and we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight. So 100% in-person model would, in our planning now, would replace the current hybrid model. And then, and then there'd also be the 100% virtual model would remain, and it would probably remain unchanged for the last 10 weeks of school, but we'll talk about what September looks like. And again, I'll share all that data next week as soon as the surveys close and we can put it together. So what we're doing now, planning for a full return, so the district is currently and has been preparing for the possibility of bringing students back five days per week this school year. I want to be really clear because I did get some emails that the 100% virtual model will still be offered to students currently attending virtually. And we would like to be able to offer that, that virtual model to current hybrid students who might be uncomfortable with a full return. And, and I have to use the word "hope" there, and that's why that original, the survey that went out this week that's still open through Friday is really trying to determine how many families who are currently hybrid would not come back if it was five days and would want virtual. And because that's, that is critical to the next discussion around the need to change student schedules, which is, we don't want to do, but if we have a large influx of families wanting to go virtual or hybrid, that's where the scheduling comes into play, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Our preparation for a full return has many moving parts, and it's focused on the most recent CDC guidelines. So as we look at our planning, what does that mean? That means that we would be returning to school with less than six feet. It's not three feet, it's just less than six feet. So there are classrooms that we can do it at four and a half feet, and there's classrooms that we might need to be a little closer. But we're really continuing to look and measure and determine that it's not necessarily three feet, it's just the less than six feet. Masking is going to remain in place for the remainder of this school year for all staff and students. That isn't going to change. And then ultimately, it's, some areas I'll talk about is what we're continuing to build. So we'll go to the next slide. So right now, we are, it is not a light switch. I've used that analogy. It's not just a light switch to flip and say everybody can come back. There is a lot of planning that takes place, which we have been doing and are going to continue to do, so I want to let the community know. So first is around facilities. So we are starting to move furniture back into the classrooms. Our classrooms across the district, we did move furniture out to allow for that spacing. So we are in the process now of starting to move furniture back into the classrooms. Our principals are working with our head custodians and our B&amp;G team to determine where is the priority, what needs to move first, and what can wait until a little bit later. Restroom facilities are all going to be coming back online. While they're open, we have, you know, stalls and sinks shut down in order to allow for distancing in the restroom, and we'll have to open those back up to allow for more students in school. I will tell you, I'm not overly concerned about restrooms. Students typically do social distancing all by themselves in the restroom, simply because we have school-aged students. The other area is we're continuing to take a look at cafeteria in our gymnasium spaces because we'll have more students, obviously, in the cafeterias and more students in the gymnasiums. And so we just want to make sure that, what will that look like in a full return? And I'll come back to cafeteria in a moment. Transportation is, is definitely a difficult situation, but nothing is impossible. And so we are currently, transportation is currently, again, rerouting buses to accommodate more students. And so as we look at a full return, we're determining that we can potentially use the Department of Transportation guidelines versus SED guidelines for buses. What that means is we would need to put more students on buses than we currently have, and we do believe we can get clearance from the state around that. And we're working with some districts who have, are doing that. So also coming soon is going to be probably our final transportation survey for this year, asking parents if they can commit to transporting their children for the last 10 weeks of school. So probably that's April 19th is fourth quarter. The survey may ask about April 12th, that if we can have students, any families that are already driving or are willing to drive, and then we would only route our buses for students who are needing a bus. Being a public school, we have to transport anybody outside of the walking distance. But we've continued to hear, and I appreciate so many families wanting to partner, and this is an opportunity to limit the number of students on buses by having families who've already been driving their children continue through the rest of the school year. We did a survey in January, good results on that, but that was only asking about emergency transportation. So this survey is going to be very similar, but really asking for, can you drive your child? Or will you be able to drive your child, you know, April, May, and June to help limit some of our school bus needs? I will be honest, this is the, probably one of the biggest issues that we're working through, and it's also because of our shortage of bus drivers. And so as the district grows, we have the buses, we need the drivers, we just posted again, we tweeted out. We're continuing to look for drivers. We do have a couple that are in training, which is exciting. But anybody out there who knows somebody who's looking for a great part-time job with a great team, and, and, and just whatever we can do to get more drivers will be helpful. We're going to keep working through that. The next slide is our continued preparation, so buildings and schedules. So buildings right now are creating drafts of student and staff schedules to accommodate a full return and maintain our 100% virtual model. So there's a determining impacts, there are also determining impacts of a full return and solutions to address each of those. And we're working to limit impacts on student schedules. And this is the hardest piece because as a parent myself, I may not want to sign up for something if I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. So we want to make sure people know is, our goal is not to change student schedules. Our goal is to keep them the same. But if we allow hybrid families to move to virtual and virtual families to move back to 100% in-person five days a week, that, that may have an impact on our schedule. So that's why that preliminary survey, I understand people don't have every detail, but if you could share with us what you, your initial is, you're not tied to that, but it will be, help us for our planning purposes. Because again, our goal is not to impact student schedules, but I also want to be open with the community that if that is a reality, that we have to do that to get everybody back in school, I don't want to share that at the last minute. So again, we're doing everything in our power as we look at this data coming in to make sure that students would remain with the teacher or teachers they've had all school year. And then we're working to address some of our unknowns that we have, and I mentioned cafeterias. We think we can make this work in cafeterias. It would mean that students are eating in a cafeteria less than six feet and without masks because they're eating. Working with the Monroe County Department of Health, looking at the data that's coming out, if we continue our testing showing that our, the vast majority of our students are not positive of COVID, then it opens up the door for cafeterias being safer with more kids in them. And, but I want to be fair, the only way to bring everybody back is to obviously have the cafeterias, more students in them, and it would not be six feet distancing for the students. We do believe we can still maintain six-foot distancing for staff, but for the students, that's what we're really working on, and we don't have a final answer on that, but it's one of the unknowns. The other unknown is music. We have also, as a district, have been pushing very hard along with the rest of the county for, for some updated guidance around music. Music is still six-foot distancing, which does make sense in some areas and doesn't make sense in others. If we've got students wrestling, we don't understand why we can't have students six feet apart for music instead of 12 feet apart. And so we do believe there'll be some shifts there as well, but that's one of those areas we're trying to work through. The other is gym, gym class, physical education class. Students are supposed to be 12 feet apart for some activities, but if we're allowing high-risk sports in the state, then we're continuing to advocate to say we can figure this out, and maybe it's just the activities that we offer, but students would have to be closer than 12 feet as they're taking part in physical education. We know there are others, but we're committed to finding solutions on all of these and not letting cafeterias, music, or, or physical education stop us from moving forward with our preparations. Along with preparations, the biggest issue is, the guidance hasn't officially changed. We believe that it is, and we're gearing up to say, if it doesn't, then can we, can we resubmit our plan based on what we think is, is a good plan to still keep students and staff safe? And so we are going to continue to work through this, but the fact is, we're not waiting until something changes and then say, okay, now we have to get to work. And so this is a lot of work, and I have heard from families too who say this is, this is a lot of change for just 10 weeks. But I'll speak that we are committed to, if we can get kids back fully who want to be there, continuing our virtual program. If we can get kids back fully, we want to do it even if it's 10 weeks because it will help these students transition to summer and then transition back in September. And I'll talk a little bit about September now. So we talked about the last board meeting. We are forming four reopening advisory committees to focus on a full return in September and, as well as an effective virtual program. So while these committees' ultimate focus is going to be ensuring that we're back in September, we, might be easier if we can make it happen now, but we want to make sure that what the program we have set for September is going to be able to be more seamless if we have to move to hybrid or if the state says you've got to go virtual. We want to make sure we have the absolute best programs with the most up-to-date guidance. So these advisory committees are going to be extremely helpful. As we start these advisory committees as well, we'll be able to share the, the plans that we're finalizing for the potential return this school year. So we had 250, over 250 volunteers for these committees, and what we did in order to go through all of the volunteer forms is, we have some teachers here, incredible classroom teachers, who are part of the University of Rochester Leadership Program, aspiring administrators. And they are working on finding selections for each of our four committees. So they created a rubric that's pretty basic. It's tied to our vision and mission and core belief statements right from our webpage. And they are going through all of the volunteer forms. And myself, district administration, and the Board of Education is not in the process of selecting the parent volunteers for the advisory committees. It is a small group of, of folks working through the University of Rochester Leadership Program. We're looking at about, tentatively about three to five parents on each of the four committees. That could shift. And we're going to notify everybody who expressed an interest early next week, as soon as we can finalize names. I do think I'm, I'm working with the, the four teachers who are doing this work, is that I think we're going to have so many people that it'll end up probably being drawing out of a hat. We're not trying to limit participation, but we also want to make sure that the committees are the right size to really be nimble and focused in on work. And so more to come on that, and we'll share, we'll share that with, with all people who put in for it to be a volunteer. I think that's my last slide, Dr. Driffl. Thank you. And just, you know, in closing, we are, we are, as a, as a board and as a district, continuing to advocate and push for those, those updated metrics. And quite honestly, as we continue to go through this process, looking at the data of what's coming out of schools and the fact that we have such low rates through our rapid testing, we're committed to continuing this journey and, and ultimately see what we can do to get kids back. That is, that is a commitment that we're continuing to work through. And I am, as I said last board meeting, two weeks ago, very, very positive that I think we can get something in place that the state's going to approve. So I appreciate all of the families who come to the board meetings, who email, who reach out, and we're going to continue to find something that can work for both families who want to be virtual and families who would be interested coming back, not in hybrid but in full-time. So I know 100% definitive yet, but things are leading in a good direction, and we're going to continue doing the work behind the scenes to make sure that if and when we can do this, we can move quickly as opposed to having to start as soon as the guidance changes. That is my report from my home office, and I turn it back over to Mark Ellidge for questions, and then to Dr. Driffl for the business updates.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Board members, any questions? Sean?
Of course. Dr. Putnam, I have a question. Well, I actually have two questions for you, but they're not related at all. Well, they're a little bit related. First one is, what does the clearance for the state look like? So you're going to submit a new plan. What's the, kind of the whole process, and how long does it take to get back usually? What does that kind of look like for us?
So we're, that's, you know, and this is where the whole thing is frustrating. First of all, let's just be honest. The most frustrating thing is that I have to do a presentation, and instead of looking at other board members in our audience, I have to look at myself, which is really difficult to do. So, but I'll share this, is that we are able to resubmit our plan. I, many of us did not think we could do that because it's not on the portal where we thought it would be. It's, it's a little hidden. You have to go to the inbox. So we can resubmit our plan. But we are working with, continuing to work with the Monroe County Department of Health and all the other superintendents in our county to determine, you know, we don't want to submit something we know we don't want to submit something we know they're going to shoot down. And so we're right now starting to revise our plans that were submitted and approved in July to shift from six feet in masks to less than six feet, more than three feet in masks. So we're working through that process now. That will take some time. We're hoping to get the reopening plan revised by the end of March, by right before break, and then we'll have to run it through reopening committees that include staff and families. And so at least just to get the okay before we do the submittal. There's also discussion at the state level that we're not sure we have to resubmit. There is, if the guidance changes from the CDC, we keep hearing the New York State Department of Health is going to act. They haven't yet. I think the governor's a little busy with other things, but we're hopeful that that will change, and maybe it means we don't need to submit. So we want to be ready and poised to do either. Submit a new plan based on our recommendations that we're hearing from the Department of Health and the CDC, focus it on the CDC. And then the other option is if the New York State Department of Health adopts the CDC language, it might not mean us submitting again. So that's what we're working on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, also just how long it's taken to get back to different districts who have already submitted or?
Yeah, so back in July, they turned around our approval within days. As of now, I have heard different things. Some people have, nobody in our county that I know of has resubmitted. But it all depends. We've heard that it's quick, and we've heard that it's not. But I don't have any real data on how quickly they act.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You want to ask a question? I had another question, but go ahead.
Any other? Catherine?
Tom, it was my understanding that in the beginning, the six-foot distancing was designed to prevent a classroom from having to go into total quarantine if a student, remember those days? If a student were to become sick with COVID. So if we reduce, if it's allowed to reduce that distancing, and one or two students were to come down with COVID, let's say, you know, that they were intermingling in the cafeteria, would that have an effect on a whole classroom being quarantined? Is there any information on that?
So there is, and the answer is unfortunately, it depends. So that would all be determined by Monroe County's contact tracing. So what we're hearing now and what we're kind of really digging into is our numbers of COVID-positive within our school has been low. And so if we don't have that positive, then there wouldn't be as much of a need for contact tracing. I say that from my home office because I'm quarantined due to a contact tracing, and you should know I don't see many people outside of work where I'm wearing a mask the entire time. So, but I do leave the house. So that is a possible concern, which is that if we're less than six feet, yes, it's possible the Department of Health could quarantine a group of students or a classroom. But we go back to what else are we doing for mitigating risks? So our airflow is excellent. Everybody's wearing masks all day. We're cleaning desks in between classes. I think from talking most recently to the Department of Health that they're heading in the direction of if we can continue to do all the things we are doing except for distancing, I think we'll be in a really good spot. But Catherine, the reality is, yes, if even now, the Department of Health has quarantined not full classrooms, but, and not in Penfield recently, but a team has been quarantined, an athletic team, and it's possible that something like that could happen.
Okay, but the conversation is taking place for that possibility. Okay.
I think what really helps is their finding is that as adults get, more and more adults are vaccinated, the students, they're not, they're more asymptomatic. They're not seeing, you know, large numbers of students testing positive for COVID. Now, that could be because they're asymptomatic most of the time, is what we're hearing. But again, it goes back a little bit, I think, to that risk factor. And, you know, if we can do everything in our power to come back in person and create a system that is safe for students with masking and less than six feet, you know, that's going to be a conversation district-wide in terms of do we move forward with it knowing that it's possible a class or a grade level or a school could be quarantined, but...
Yeah, it might be part of those mitigating, you know, the bigger picture scenario. And Mark, I do have one more question, but you can come back if you want.
Did you have a question, Lisa?
I always have questions. I'll just stay with one to start. Transportation, can you speak to the transportation guidelines that are different?
Yeah, so the SED guidelines really is still six feet, basically. So it's, you know, it's, in theory, every other seat, what we're doing and got approved for is just one student per seat or one student and family member, so like two siblings could sit together. In order to get everybody back in, you know, cohort A, B, and C all together on buses, we're not going to be able to do that. So the Department of Transportation, the DOT, their guidance for public buses is a bit more relaxed. And so there is a district we know I've been working with that they did get approval in October for the Department of Transportation guidance to be used on school buses. But it would mean that they also made it all the way through the school year, including the winter, with the school bus windows open all the time. So lots more coats, but it was able, they were able to get more kids on the bus. So that's part of the conversation now. Based on the fact that we already have a large number of families driving, and we reroute buses based on only the students who need a bus because not picking up students whose families say they will continue to drive them, we'll have more students on buses, but probably not a complete full bus. So at elementary, in a typical year, we have buses with 60 students on them. At elementary, we can put three students to a bus. We're probably looking at 40 for a return, but that would mean students sitting next to somebody who's not in their family, but again, masking all the times and windows on the buses open.
Thank you.
I want to go back down. Sean?
Okay, so I have another question about the reopening committees. So you said that you had teachers, I think, or staff that are choosing family members to be on these committees. And in spirit of equity, how are we picking these families? And are we making sure that we're including everyone that needs to be included?
Yeah, so I think that one of the pieces around our, using a rubric, real basic rubric just based on our mission, vision, and core beliefs is ensuring that the people selected for the committee are, represent our community well. So really, did take into fact, they did try to look, obviously, we didn't ask a question on there about diversity or socioeconomic income or things like that, but we feel like that we can make sure that the committees are represented in a way that does take equity into mind. I don't know if that answers your question, Sean?
It does. I just wanted to hear it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Catherine?
Yes, Dr. Putnam, I was wondering if any discussions are taking place about the COVID variants that may have an impact on, you know, we're hearing kind of the conflicting stories. Everyone's very excited about the numbers coming down, and then Dr. Fauci gets on and says, well, we could have a fourth surge. And so, you know, it's hard to distinguish the correct path. So I'm assuming that a lot of conversations are taking place, and I was wondering if you could shed any light on that?
Yeah, there are, that is absolutely a conversation that is taking place at the Monroe County Department of Health level, who we do look to Dr. Mendoza to provide an advisory role, and we do lean on that greatly. The, I cannot speak scientifically to the variants. I will just share that that doesn't seem to be a concern to the point where it would halt districts trying to get back this school year. It goes back to the mitigating, all those mitigating steps we're taking around, it's still masking, trying to maintain as much distance as possible. It might be less than six feet, but as much as possible. And then trying to continue our rapid testing in the schools and then working through to make sure that families who are not feeling well, students who aren't feeling well, are staying home. All of those things, none of those things we have been doing would change. Ultimately, they would probably become more strict to make sure that we're staying as safe as possible. And there is talk, again, around the vaccinations that our adults in our community are receiving. Our staff are working through that, in that, you know, there are questions on how well the vaccinations are going to hold up against some of the variants. But as of now, again, I'm not the doctor to speak to that scientifically, but it sounds like it's still, it still is a good sign that we can move forward with continuing to build a reopening plan.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Lisa, you have another one?
I'm sorry, I have another question. Tom, you mentioned about continued testing. So do you anticipate continued testing? And then I guess my concern would be if our rates start to rise, what would that mean? I mean, is there some parameter around where we have to then go back to shut down after we're open? Or what are you, what are you seeing or thinking?
Yep, so those are, those are those pieces that I wish it was as easy as a light switch. If the CDC, if the state simply adopts a CDC guidance that is tied to regional infection rates. So we are advocating that instead of tying it to the entire region, you tie it to a school district. So honestly, Penfield is lower than some other school districts. And there are other school districts in Monroe County that have a lower infection rate than Penfield. But in talking with the Department of Health, if we have a strong enough plan saying these are all of the steps we're taking to mitigate risk in all areas, and we're still doing our random volunteer testing, and we can showcase that our internal testing is still so low, our hope would be that our plan could be approved with that as part of the metric. So that if the infection rate for adults in our community goes above maybe what the CDC recommends, if we can showcase we're still testing and we're at a, you know, a 0.2% or a 0.6%, that we would be able to maintain staying open in that case. So there are still unknowns, but I think that is still very promising that the Department of Health is working closely with school districts to make sure that our plan, while the Monroe County Department of Health does not approve our plans, they are happy to take a look at them and say, yep, we could support that. And if we get that blessing, that only goes to help us with the state.
Okay. Any additional questions from the board?
Sorry, I have one.
Oh, Abby?
Does Abby have a question?
I was wondering if there have been any plans put in place for the anticipation of a fourth surge later this year, if it happens at all? I know this is similar to another question that was asked, but I was wondering if there had been any measures planned that will be put in place if that is the case?
I think that's a great question, Abby, and the answer right now is no. So as we build this plan, we're really focused on the things that are in our control. So facilities, transportation, scheduling of staff and students. That is going to be our, all of those things we can control. If there were to be, if we were able to get back in place and have more students in our buildings and there was a surge of COVID numbers, we would still be at the beck and call of the state like we were back in March. So if something like that happened, the state, Department of Health, through the governor, could do an executive order that all schools have to go fully remote. That is the extent we have right now. But again, I feel, looking at our numbers that we've had all year, I feel pretty strongly that schools with our staff being vaccinated, which they weren't back in March and September and October, I think we're going to be in a good place. But Abby, your question is something that we need as a district to have a solid answer to before we submit reopening plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Okay. I think that concludes the questions for this portion. I'm sorry, was there more questions?
I'm sorry, I know. Lisa and I have, it's crazy. One more question about 100% virtual. So you indicated next year, we're still going to have a, we're probably most likely going to have a 100% virtual option, or we don't know yet, or we're talking about it?
No, I like the probably most likely don't know yet answer. So to be really clear, we are going to have an advisory committee for 100% virtual in September with the belief that the state is going to make that a requirement on schools again. The reason we believe it's going to be a requirement is that we don't think, I think it's going to be tough that they'll have a vaccination for people under 18. I know they're working on it. I know that, I just read something that they're really hopeful that they can roll something out in the summer. But I think that I don't foresee the COVID vaccination being a required vaccination for students to come back to school. It's too early, is what we're hearing. I think they're not going to make that a requirement. So I think because of that, we do believe the state will require us to have a virtual plan. What we don't want to do is wait until we learn that we have to have a virtual plan to try to build one. And we know that we, you know, I've heard from virtual families that are very happy with what we have. I've heard from virtual families who are not happy but understand that it's a rough year. And I've heard from virtual families who do not like what we're offering. So I do know that there is no solution that will probably please everybody, but what we can do is make sure that that committee is working to plan the most effective virtual program that we can offer and follow the guidance in September. So we don't have the official word from the state that we're going to be required to have one, but I think it's very, very likely, as does, as does the Monroe County Superintendent Group and the state superintendent group. I think it will happen.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, one last time. I think we are all set. Dr. Putnam, would you like to continue on with the budget?
Yeah, I would. I'll turn it over to Dr. Griffl, and I'm just going to put for the record that I got more questions when I'm home at quarantine than when I'm at the meeting. So I will be at every other meeting. We'll find a way to get me there. But I thank you for the board because I think, I think all of those questions were really good, and it, like, we don't have 100% answers for everything. But at the end of the day, what I know the board is committed to, and I know the district is, is we're not going to wait. You know, we have been planning, and that's the hardest part. And we go back to, you know, in August, there were real conversations that school districts were not going to be able to stay open past Thanksgiving. And there were lots of concerns around how this was going to be a huge superspreader event in all of our schools. And in September, and in October, and November, all we heard from the state and the media is that, you know, when are we going to close? The orange zones, the yellow zones, the red zones. There wasn't talk the whole first half of this school year around coming back full time. And again, everything shifted in January with the sort of surprise addition of high-risk sports. The reason high-risk sports is sort of how they're able to say they can do it is because you've got really clear contact tracing. You know, if a student is wrestling another student, you can really quickly do contact tracing. I think we can do the same thing in schools, which is where superintendents and communities started in January saying, wait a minute, if you can do high-risk sports, why can't we do reopening? And that's where in December and then into January, really a hard push from the district and districts across the county saying, you know, we need the metrics now. Let's focus on the positives. Give us the metrics for how we get back into school. And that is starting to shift, and we started building in December and having conversations. And again, what we don't want to, we're committed to making sure we have a plan ready to go. And again, the date we're looking at is April 19th. It could be earlier, it could be later, but April 19th is the last quarter of school. And it would be, as a superintendent... and it would be, as a superintendent educator and as a dad, it would be great to get kids back in for that last 10 weeks of school, to get them ready to go for um, summer. And then uh, I think it would be easier if, to do a full return in September if our students had that opportunity um, to be back five days a week. And again, I want to be really clear that I don't leave out our virtual students, that that is, that is absolutely something we've got to also make sure that we are um, focusing on, because there are going to be students who are not comfortable for a number of reasons, and we're committed to continuing that virtual program. Um, and I do think we can do both. Um, all right, so that concludes me. I'll turn it over to Dr. Drifol, who will take you through the budget and through um, and through the rest of the meeting, and hopefully um, the town will, uh, Dave Renner will turn off my huge uh, uh, image, so you don't have to stare at me on the screen during Dr. Dan's presentation.
All right, thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Can everybody hear me?
Now he can hear me. All right. So we're back again with another budget development update, as we look forward to next year's academic programming, uh, next year's statistical year. So tonight, we just have a couple of quick draft budget updates around projected appropriations. Um, tonight diving into our BOSI's projections, which make up a little over 10% of the entire budget, our current revenue outlook, and then uh, scheduled for this evening, uh, the board is to adopt uh, the annual meeting notice with the identified propositions that we've been discussing um, the last few months. So where are we in our budget development process? Um, we're at, at March 9th. Uh, tonight, we're looking at the second draft of our budget for next year. Uh, we're further refining appropriations and looking at revenue analysis as developments come out of Washington DC and Albany. Uh, starting tomorrow, uh, we work towards the proposed budget. So the board is scheduled to adopt the superintendent's executive budget come April 20th, uh, at which point we need to engage in all of the legal requirements, disclosures, newspaper filings, uh, website postings, things of that nature, before eventually getting to our annual budget hearing and budget vote, and we'll discuss those dates in detail in a moment. So just a high-level analysis of where we sit here on March 19th. The current 2020, 21-year operating budget is $102.6 million. Uh, and for next year, we're projecting to have a budget that's just a hair over $104 million. So just short of that $1.5 million increase. You can see the top row, general support. This is items related to all district oversight, um, traditionally what we call administrative expenses, things related to district office, things related to our Buildings and Grounds Department, um, professional services, insurance, legal fees, BOSI's administrative costs, uh, all of those items, just about even year over year, slightly down currently. The instructional component of our program ranges from everything related to curriculum development, uh, professional learning, all of our teaching and instruction that happens in our schools, um, our special programs, occupational education programs, media, technology, uh, and all the pupil services, so guidance, psychologists, social workers, uh, things of that nature, along with our extracurricular activities and interscholastic athletics. So that comprises uh, the vast majority of our budget, uh, projected to increase a little under 2% next year, or a little over a million dollars. Transportation, uh, like general support, basically even year over year, just scheduled to increase $13,000 right now, uh, for a total of $4.38 million. And then undistributed costs make up the rest of the budget, so this is related to debt service payments, uh, in accordance with our debt service schedule. So that's debt principal, debt interest, that is all of our employee benefits, uh, so employer contribution uh, to the ERS retirement reserve, the TRS retirement reserve, social security contributions, uh, Medicare contributions, healthcare contributions, dental contributions, uh, so on, so forth. Uh, and additionally, in undistributed costs are inter-fund transfers to the special aid fund to cover local costs associated with ESY, uh, extended summer year, summer programming, uh, and any subsidy required to the cafeteria fund. So it brings us to a current projected cost increase of 1.41%. Uh, you can see on the bottom where we've been in cost increases for the past decade. The black line represents the average of where we've been. Uh, it's a 2.36% increase uh, on an annual basis. And you can see in the past two years how we've dipped uh, below that average. Last year's budget increasing 1.87%, and next year's current budget projected to increase just uh, 1.41%. The other way of looking at this budget is through the object side of things, to see where the money really goes. Uh, so you can see about half of the budget is tied up in personnel costs, wages and salaries. Uh, that is scheduled to increase just about three quarters of a percent for next year. All of the contractual services that we engage in as a district, so everything from professional learning opportunities, to outside software solutions, to all of our utilities, natural gas, um, fuel for the buses, so on, so forth, also scheduled to increase just that three quarters of a percent. BOSI's costs, uh, as I mentioned before, we'll discuss a little bit more detail in a moment, uh, scheduled to increase 7%, um, particularly just because of technology costs. Uh, just so the board is reminded, and for the community, all of our BOSI's costs are aided currently at the BOSI's aidability rate, which is typically for us around 71%. Equipment and materials, currently scheduled to decrease um, a couple hundred thousand dollars, 7%, just based on some of the things we've seen this year with our budget development process. Debt service in accordance with our um, 15-year debt schedule, scheduled to increase 3.95%. Employee benefits, as I mentioned, all those different uh, fringe categories, only increasing 3.3% this year. Uh, as we've discussed in prior meetings, this is due to strong performance in the healthcare consortium with reduced claims in the 2020 year. And additionally, the workers' comp consortium uh, performed very well last year with reduced claims. And then inter-fund transfers decreasing this year due to a decrease uh, in budget appropriations for bus purchases. As we move forward, we'll just purchase buses out of our capital reserve and not out of the operating fund budget. So again, bringing us to that bottom-line number of just a little over $104 million, or 1.4%. So this one's a little bit of an eye chart, but it's a, it's, it's important. So looking at our current BOSI's budget and where we're projected to be for next year. So last Friday, we certified to Monroe One BOSI's our initial request for services for, for BOSI's programs and services. Uh, it's not finalized, the final BOSI's budget isn't actually due until May 1st, but it represents where we think we're going to be. Want to just take through some of these items. Um, so BOSI's costs related to district office, uh, currently scheduled to increase about 3%. Uh, the big jump here this year was that we moved all of our centralized printing services to BOSI's, to leverage the aid on it as opposed to individual contracts with private vendors. Uh, central services typically relates to um, some of our safety services. It also relates to uh, the telephone services that we receive through Monroe One BOSI's. BOSI's administration fees are just the shared component fees for all of the BOSI's administrators at schools and, and at their um, their administration building, and that's broken out by ARWADA costs, so it's just a, a per pupil cost that they, they generate. ARWADA is a year in arrears, so next year, our, our WADA is actually increasing a little bit, even though this year's decroment, enrollment decreased. Uh, so the following year, '22, '23, our WADA amount for Penfield will decrease, so our share of the costs for BOSI's will, will substantially decrease a little bit. Benefit administration is everything related to the oversight of unemployment insurance, workers' compensation insurance, dental insurance, uh, and our medical insurance providers. So this has to do with uh, the appeal boards, it has to do with our consultants that oversee um, some of these massive consortiums. You know, for instance, our medical consortium, the RASH Consortium in Monroe County is multiple hundreds of millions of dollars. Um, so we're able to route some of these contracts through BOSI's to generate that favorable amount of BOSI's aid ratio. So the operational BOSI's costs, um, currently scheduled to increase about uh, two and three quarters for next year, or two and, two-thirds. Looking down to the instructional side of BOSI's, uh, curriculum and instruction, uh, this area jumps up uh, primarily due to our um, addition to the diversity, equity, and inclusion course that um, BOSI's District Superintendent Dan White spoke to the board about uh, just a few meetings back. So we're excited about the addition of that program. Special programs is related to um, BOSI's uh, special education services, not anticipating a substantial change in enrollment for those programs, so relatively even year over year. Our vocational programs are the occupational education programs that um, some of our kids elect to participate in, so automotive, new visions, the healthcare training. Uh, again, not a substantial change in enrollment, so that's why that is relatively even year over year. Uh, library technology is the databases that our district subscribes to for all the different research components for our schools. So technology is the big one, um, and it's uh, one of the costs that we continually overspend relative to our budget, particularly in the last couple of years, as we've gone one-to-one as a district. And it's not just the hardware that is leading to the cost, it's all the associated software for online learning, it's all the different um, training associated with instructional platforms, it's all the different software solutions required um, to make sure all these things work. So the $1.25 million uh, as budgeted for next year is, I think, a pretty safe number. Um, just for comparison, for this year, we've actually spent almost double that already, um, 2.2 or 2.3 million dollars or so, but that was due to the massive influx of devices that we had to purchase um, to get through this year's programming. So as we get into a more of a steady state for next year, I think this will land to a more stable place, but that's the, the big increase there. Guidance jumps up um, substantially, but it's not a lot of absolute money. Uh, that's for the software package that we use uh, at our seven through 12 levels for the, for kids to be tracked. Interscholastic costs are refereeing consortium. Um, I believe there's a, a fingerprinting fee associated with that and some scheduling support from Section 5. And transportation costs, uh, scheduled to decrease a bit. The biggest reason for this scheduled decline is the addition of Penfield having a wheelchair bus, so we no longer rely on uh, BOSI's to do that transportation on our behalf. Additionally, due to um, the Monroe One bus driver shortage, um, some of their services just have had to be cut. So some things that they used to be able to offer, they no longer can, um, so we haven't signed up for those services. So all up, all in, uh, BOSI's costs scheduled to increase about $850,000 for next year, uh, a little over $12.3 million total as a part of our $104 million budget. That component scheduled to increase 7% uh, as we currently stand today. So looking at the other side of the ledger, uh, some revenue information. Uh, good news, as I mentioned last time, the state had said that they were going to restore the withholdings, the 20% uh, aid reductions withholdings that they had uh, given us back in July, August, and September. Uh, as of last meeting, we hadn't received that money, but now we have. Uh, it's actually, we've been made whole on our state aids, that's great news. Regarding the current year, uh, legislation has been introduced at the state level to increase unassigned fund balance, uh, which is currently bound to 4% of next year's uh, budget. Uh, we've discussed in the past that 4% is essentially our rainy day fund. It's the only amount of money that we're allowed to have as legally unencumbered for unnecessary or unknown expenses. And when you look at a 52-week year, 4% of the budget really accounts to about two weeks. So that's our emergency fund, it's a two-week emergency fund. And when we apply that to our personal lives, when we're told three, four, or five, six months, maybe even longer, you can see how there's a disconnect there, um, which requires school district budgeting to be very precise. Additionally, on the revenue side of things, um, the state comptroller's office released a report last week, uh, as the state budget draws near, uh, showing that the state budget financial situation has improved drastically uh, in the past couple of months, um, to the point where that $15 billion deficit that we heard for months and months and months has actually potentially reversed into a $1.6 billion surplus. So we don't know exactly what that means.
Wait, can you say it again?
Yep, so the, the state comptroller released a report last week, a mid-year guidance that, uh, that, which infers that their $15 billion deficit, which was over the course of two years, 10 billion and 5 billion, has potentially, based on reduced expenses and higher-than-expected revenues, turned into a $1.6 billion surplus. So we will see exactly what that looks like, um, but it, it's a positive development in terms of, I think income tax receipts were higher than we thought. As we've discussed here, county sales tax numbers have been higher than were projected.
Okay.
So we'll see what happens. We'll see what happens for sure, but it's positive news. The um, services aid consolidation proposal seems to be losing momentum. If you recall, that is the proposal that the governor put forward in his executive address that sought to consolidate expense-driven aids like BOSI's and transportation, um, which would really be a, a detriment to school districts, but particularly smaller school districts that really rely on those services. It seems to be losing momentum. I think as Mark and Catherine mentioned last time at their legislative meeting, uh, Senator Brooke had mentioned that there'd been strong opposition against that, we keep hearing that, but we'll continue our advocacy against. Uh, Saturday, uh, the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan. So as I read this evening, the House looks like they're going to take that up tomorrow. Uh, it's anticipated to pass. We don't know exactly what the local impact will be for Penfield Central. Dr. Putnam and I have seen the uh, numbers from Senator Schumer's office, what towns will receive, the county will receive villages, but uh, the way the education funding would flow would be through Albany, through SED. So it would be money in next year's budget, it would be nothing that would be immediately available. Um, but more information to come, hopefully by next meeting, we have a clearer picture of what that looks like for us. So we are in March. The state budget is still due at the end of the month. Um, there has been limited reporting on what the state budget situation is going to look like, um, given some of the turmoil in Albany. Uh, there was a comment from the governor at a press conference last week that he's confident that we'll get the budget done on time. Uh, there's been no indications exactly what it's going to look like, but based on what seems to be an improved state budget picture and the federal stimulus money coming to New York State, uh, we're optimistic that education funding could have positive ramifications. But that remains to be seen. So with that, local funding is still to be determined, what the levy looks like, but I, I'm very comfortable saying publicly that, you know, we're certainly not going to have any need to break uh, that local levy cabinet.
Yeah.
So here are the actual revenue projection numbers of where we currently sit. Um, so as a reminder, we submitted to the state our tax cap calculation, which came to 1.97%. If you add in STAR and associated late fees and fines, um, it's a projected increase to revenue for us as it currently stands at 1.99%. As it currently stands from the executive proposal, New York State Aid um, is only scheduled to increase less, less than 1%, um, but that could change here in the month ahead. As we discussed last time, the county sales tax, for budget purposes, for us is scheduled to increase um, eight and a half percent. I don't think sales tax will actually increase eight and a half percent, but from where we stood last year, um, with the massive expectation that county sales tax would drop off, I think we'll be in a better place next year relative to where our budget numbers were last year. Other revenue, um, some of these are still those program-related things that's hard to determine. Um, will be uh, health service costs um, for districts that attend private schools uh, here in Penfield, um, that we're required to provide, and then we bill back to home district. Will there be driver's ed programs? Will there be athletic admissions? What's going to happen with interest rates for our bank accounts, some of those things? Um, so some of that uncertainty is why we have a slight decrease projection there. And then historically, for assigned fund balance, we've always allocated a little bit over $2 million of year-end fund balance towards next year's budget. At this point, um, we don't have a number of exactly what we would apply, we're certainly open to doing so, um, but that remains to be seen. And then inter-fund transfers in accordance with our debt service schedule, we're bringing in from the debt service fund, the V Fund, over to the general fund, uh, $390,000 to help offset um, some of our debt service principal. offset some of our debt service principal payments. So those are the numbers on where we stand for revenue, and then when we bring the two together, those projected appropriations from earlier and those projected revenues, our current budget shortfall for the '21-'22 year stands at just under $1.3 million. So like I said, we typically apply $2 million of assigned fund balance. We're already there. We're already in the realm of balanced budget, so these are continued positive developments, and there's absolutely no signs that any drastic action is going to be necessary on the expense side of the budget or on the revenue side of budget. So as we move forward here in our budget development process, we are scheduled to adopt the annual meeting for the board this evening. So as is customary, the May vote is always on the third Tuesday, so this year it is Tuesday, May 18th. We will schedule our vote at Penfield High School, as we usually do, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Absentee ballot applications will be made available from the district clerk beginning on April 2nd. An eligibility reminder for voters is that you need to be at least 18 years old, you need to be a U.S. citizen, you have to be a resident for at least 30 days, you do not have to be homeowner, you can rent, you do not need to have any affiliation with the school district, a kid in the schools, grandkid in the schools, anything like that, so long as you live within the Penfield Central School District boundaries, you are eligible to vote. The associated propositions for the May vote have not changed from our last discussion. So the first proposition would be the school operating budget. We don't have a finalized figure, but as it currently stands, a little over 104 million dollars. We have our land purchase referendum going to the community, so we are seeking to buy 40 acres at the corner of Jackson and Plank to be the hopeful site of a future operations facility for our bus garage and Buildings and Grounds Department. It's an $800,000 expense, but it is paid from our existing capital reserves, so there's no associated new funding impact, no tax impact for the community to approve that land purchase. The third proposition is a bus purchase from our capital reserve for buses. So we are seeking to buy seven new large buses this year at a total cost inclusive of trade-ins of $870,000. We have previously approved $480,000 of operating budget funds for that purchase, so the authorization for this is $390,000 from our bus purchase reserve. We have two existing capital reserves, the 2014 capital reserve for buildings and the 2016 capital reserve for buildings that are both fully funded. Those will be going towards the anticipated project vote later this fall, so we need to create a new capital reserve for planning future projects. So the reserve authorization for this 2021 capital reserve for buildings will be 10 years or $25 million in aggregate funding, whatever happens first to be fully funded. And then the fifth and final proposition is our Board of Education election. So some of the current questions I've earlier alluded to, but what is going to be the state education aid and what is it specifically going to be for Penfield Central? With that, what local funding requirements are we actually going to have to make the ends meet of our budget and present a balanced budget to the voters? And what are the implications of that levy? So I've reached out to all of our six towns for preliminary assessment information. I've heard back from two. They're very busy still with with their spring season, but as soon as we have some assessment information and potential levels of assessment, we'll be able to bring back to the board some very tentative tax rate projections, so that can inform your decision-making. We are very closely monitoring enrollment information as that drives our staffing considerations. We still have a little bit of outstanding collective bargaining, which could potentially adjust costs a little bit here in the final six weeks. And like Dr. Putnam had mentioned earlier, we are truly monitoring developments and requirements on a seemingly daily basis. Just yesterday, we had to modify our legal notice based on the ballot number rule that went into effect just yesterday. Seems like every day we're course correcting somehow, some way. So as Dr. Putnam mentioned, we don't know if there's going to be an online requirement for next year, what does that look like, what does it cost, does it require additional staffing, is there going to be contractual cost? Just one of the things that we're trying to keep in mind as we put together next year's operating budget. So next steps, we have a board meeting scheduled for March 23rd, at which point we will bring pertinent budget updates to the board. The state budget is still due on April 1st, so hopefully I'll have information released by then. By April 3rd, the budget notice needs to be legally posted in our papers of record. April 20th, the board is scheduled to adopt the '21-'22 operating budget. April 27th, all the budget disclosures will be disseminated, so these are things like our academic performance report, the property tax report card, all of the things that have been added to the budget packet over the years. May 4th is our scheduled budget hearing, and May 18th, as I mentioned, is that statewide vote and board election. So once again, a lot of budget information, still some unknowns, but as we move towards the spring, through the spring months, definitely a little bit more sense of clarity. But again, as I mentioned before, I'm really trying to keep an ear on where things are developing, so it informs our process here at Penfield. So with that, I'm quite happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Driffl. Board members, any questions?
I have a question.
Emily?
Did you, and you probably said this before, but I just thought about it, is technology, those purchases, is that aidable?
Yep. Yeah, so as long as we purchase it through Bosse's, it's an aidable expense.
Okay. And then, does anyone else have a question? I have another one. So that instructional increase?
Mm-hmm.
Was that like, what was that?
So instruction is all those items I mentioned from curriculum development to teaching in our schools, special education programs, occupational education, library technology, pupil services, sports, extracurriculars. So the board was furnished the entire line item budget, right? So just in the purpose of time, we try to consolidate some of those categories, but if there are any direct questions on anything within the entire budget draft, please don't hesitate to reach out to Dr. Putnam, and I'll get you that answer.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Lisa? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
I didn't know if anyone else did. Oh, okay. Actually, I had a question about equalization rates. So you kind of mentioned that you had reached out to the towns. Do you know if they've done any, because I think they were lagging in doing assessments because of COVID, or are we just kind of just waiting at this point?
Yep, so there's two questions in there, right? So the towns are doing their assessment data. I haven't heard back from all of them, I only heard back from two. I heard back from Pittsford, which is a very small assessment for us, and I heard back from Macedon, which is also a very small assessment for us. I can tell you that Pittsford's level of assessment, which sometimes becomes their equalization rate, is down a little bit, which would indicate that they're not doing a reassessment, but I don't know about the other four towns, and because those two towns make up such a small part of our overall assessment, it's really not going to move the needle one way or the other, so we're really going to have to wait to hear what we get from the other four towns.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there another question down there? No, okay.
I do have a couple of things. First off, I think this is just to make sure everyone understands, everyone in the audience understands, and when we talk about aidability, can you just explain what that represents?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we make an expense-driven aid purchase, one of these eligible aid categories, so for instance, Bosse's or transportation, in the current year, we spend that dollar, and then depending on our aid ratio in that specific category, in the following fiscal year, we receive a certain percentage of that dollar back. So for Bosse's I mentioned, we are around 71% aid, so if we spend $100,000 in Bosse's costs, we receive back in the following year as state revenue $71,000.
Thank you. The other question I had was around the technology. We had the big increase, a lot of it was tied to new computers, and I just was wondering about the future impact of computers in terms of hardware lifecycle.
That's a great question. So we have worked closely with our Director of Technology to determine what is going to be the durability of these. As we know, technology changes quickly and instructional programs change quickly. We did buy a relatively rigorous device, knowing that would have to withstand some challenges from our kiddos. Generally, statewide, nationwide, what we think here too is that we'll get at least three years out of each device, potentially four, potentially five. So what we're trying to do is incorporate a replacement schedule that gets us into a more sustainable solution, where maybe come ninth grade, you get a new device and you keep that through high school. Maybe it's something that changes with the building, so when you go to Bay Trail, you get a new device and you keep that through eighth grade. We're working through exactly what that model's going to look like. I think we have different model requirements for our younger kiddos. Sometimes we like to have more of a tactile solution, like a tablet, for some of their learning needs, but it's definitely something we're working through evaluating this year. We've had, obviously with much more devices, much more repair requirements, but yeah, we're learning a little bit on the fly there.
Sounds like a good strategy, though. Thank you. Okay, again, board members? All right, Dr. Putnam?
That concludes board reports from my home office.
Thank you, I didn't want to, I didn't want to assume.
Thank you.
Which, bear with me a minute. Okay, which brings us to the notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election. Notice is hereby given, I'm going to make sure, start from the beginning here, and this is for the notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and elections for the Penfield Central School District, which includes the towns of Penfield, Parenton, Pittsford, Brighton, Macedon, Walworth, and the counties of Monroe and Wayne, New York. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District, Monroe County, New York, will be held at the senior high school building in said district on Tuesday, May 4th at 7:00 PM for the presentation of the budget. If it is necessary or deemed appropriate to conduct the hearing virtually, information on how to access the hearing will be made available on the district's website or by contacting the district clerk. That the annual meeting vote and election of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District of the town of Penfield, New York, I mean, Sheriff Monroe County, New York, will be held at the senior high school in said district on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, at which time the polls will be opened to vote by voting, by, open to vote by voting by machine or ballot upon the following items. Item one is to elect three board members for three-year terms commencing July 1st, 2021, and expiring June 30th, 2024, to succeed Ms. Catherine Dean, Mr. Mark Elidge, and Mr. William Jaeger. And then two, adoption of the following propositions, which are the propositions that Dr. Driffl has explained to us. So with that, we have a motion that the Board of Education approve the notice of the annual meeting, budget vote, and election.
So move. Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, and this will be a roll call for Oat and Sharon?
So we have a motion by Lisa Benati-Chidzie, second by Emily Belser, that the board approve the notice of annual meeting, budget vote, and election. Barbara Baviars?
Aye.
Emily Belser?
Aye.
Lisa Benati-Chidzie?
Aye.
Catherine Dean?
Aye.
Mark Elidge?
Aye.
Sean Akil?
Aye.
Ann William Jaeger?
Aye.
Seven, four, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. And we have policies for first read. We have two policies for first read. One is around residency, and one is weighted grading and academic ranking. So would a member of the policy committee like to speak to those?
Do you want me to do it, Tom, because you're far, far away?
Sure, that'd be, that'd be great.
Sharon gave me the notes, so I wouldn't be lost. Thank you, Sharon. So we have two policies as part of our annual 20% of reviewing the manual that are up for first read. The first one is residency, just some minor changes with repetitive sentence and replacing the word student with pupil, and then we also removed a paragraph about payment of tuition for non-resident students, because this is no longer applicable to our policies. And the second one is 7223 weighted grading and academic ranking. We removed class rank, because this no longer applies, and that was corrected, I think, oh, I'm sorry, we corrected the weighted grading system to reflect the current practice at the high school, and then that was corrected in the accompanying regulation. So these will be on the website for comment, and then we'll bring them back for second read approval at our next meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. Any discussion on that? Okay, the Monroe County School Board Association Committee meetings, would anyone like to speak on the labor relations?
Well, I'm the only one. I would love to. The presentation was negotiations in COVID-19. Linda Van Koski, who's the Labor Relations Administrator for Monroe Two, sorry, Monroe Two Orleans Bosse's, was the presenter, but she broke her presentation into two segments. She first provided a brief overview of recent settlements, then going on to discuss anticipated issues and upcoming negotiations. She noted that the average settlement is 3.13%, but regionally, there have been a number of one- or two-year rollovers, likely due to the uncertainty around school reopenings and funding moving forward. The issues, I mean, I'm not going to go into great, oh dear, come back here. Okay, all right. Where did it go? I hate that. Technology. The highlights included layoffs, salary benefits, this is all part of, that seemed to be appearing in upcoming negotiations, benefits, retirement incentives, summer semester. So that, I mean, I could go and take another whole hour to go into this, because it was very, very in-depth presentation, but the meeting was recorded via Zoom, and you're invited to view it on the website.
Thank you, thank you. Next up is information exchange.
Emily's going to do it tonight.
Yes, I will do it tonight. So the presentation was on college entrance and getting students prepared for school or college, and there were some counselors that presented, as well as some admissions directors from Brockport and RIT. And the counselor started with discussing the pros and cons of, I guess, counseling changes due to the pandemic, and so some of the pros were stronger in varied, more varied ways, I guess, of communication with students and parents, but then some of the cons were less in-person times, so they were able to see the parents and the students via Zoom and meetings like that, but they weren't really able to have that in-person time and that relationship building. But then they went into how to prepare seniors to meet the college entrance criteria, and a lot of it is like, the students kind of have to do their research and, you know, either visit colleges or visit the college website, and just make sure that they have all that is needed in order to apply, you know, and they were talking about how they can be helpful to the students during this time.
Thank you. Thank you. And then Legislative Committee. Catherine, did you have anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, I just brought the notes that we had, again, reiterating about, I mentioned last time how we had the legislators join us. But there have been school board members on this committee who have been meeting with different legislators. There have been meetings with Senator Ort, Helming, and Assemblyman Holly, and Harry Bronson to date. There is across the board support among legislators for not using federal dollars to supplant the foundation aid and not combining expense-based aids. Full reimbursement of star and transportation costs. Everyone is expressing the desire to return to legislating and have some oversight of the governor's executive powers, and we've seen some movement on that. There have been varying degrees of awareness regarding the, you know, the community involvement with school reopening plans and whatnot. There's, everybody in every district is aware of the frustrations and the challenges. And so, you know, we're expressing that as well to the legislators because we're trying to get those consistent metrics. And it sounds like, you know, there's movement on that as well. Let's see. There are meetings scheduled with Assemblywoman Sarah Clark and Burns. That, oh, actually, that has taken place now. And there's an upcoming one with Senator Gallivan on March 12th. And I, just let me just read this because this might be old news now. Yeah, this is not, I mean, with everything that's going on in Albany, you know, sometimes the discussions we have at legislative, by the time I get here, you know, things have already come and gone. So, you know, maybe as a group, the board can discuss whether we can invite our legislators to come and visit. That's an ongoing suggestion that comes up. And with everything that's going on with how we're trying to figure out how to move forward with reopening, it may not be the right time. Then again, it might be because, you know, we're in the midst of that. So, you know, it's something we can talk about at a workshop.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I also attended that. I think Catherine covered pretty much almost everything. There's a couple of comments I would want to say, which is, you know, it's, you know, we have, we get feedback that we need to do more to advocate for the students and advocate for reopening. And there's a lot of things that happen that aren't necessarily visible to the public. And we do talk about them here, but, you know, this brief update doesn't necessarily reflect the work that's going on. I mean, the Legislative Committee, as Catherine mentioned, that the previous meeting, we had almost, I think, every representative in Monroe County with us. And we had a very long session with them about things completely related to education. We meet with their representatives, we communicate with their representatives, as we sent letters to all of them and they responded back. So there is a lot that goes on and, you know, that's, that's also, you know, the district's working together in Monroe County as part of the Monroe County School Board Association because we have a lot of strength when we work together as one. And actually, the Monroe County School Board Association is highly respected throughout New York State and especially in Albany in how organized that we are and how effective we are at advocating. And then on top of that, there's a New York State School Board Association that also advocates on our behalf. So there is a lot that we do that is not necessarily apparent. Like I said, we talk about it here, but it is, you know, it's not front-page news, let's put it that way.
Right.
And I just, I just want to point that out. So with that, there was a couple of other spots on there too. Again, the, one of the questions was, they're trying to find out what's going to happen with this year's elections. Last year's elections were turmoil, when it changed and changed at the last minute and got delayed and it became all absentee ballot, created a lot of, a lot of work and, you know, and extra cost. But I think in the grand scheme, I don't know how much cost it was, but it was a lot of extra work. And we had to take all these ballots and open them on one day and count them all in one day. So we're trying to see what's going to happen this year. You know, we read the notice of annual meeting and election, and that's the standard way we do things. What we don't know is, is that going to be preempted this year?
Okay.
And they're trying to find that out for us as well.
Okay. Yeah, I had that question.
And, and I think that's, that was really the main part of it. So any questions or comments?
Yeah, one comment on that. I, I know that Sherri Johnson and Becky Schultz and, you know, the office there, they do tremendous work and they, they're so helpful. But I also put that question out to Jen Lunsford as well. And this is what I'm just so thrilled about is this, this personal connections with our new lawmakers, knowing them personally and having them take your phone call. And it's just such a difference from what we've been experiencing. She didn't have an answer for me, but it's out there. Everybody knows that this is an important issue, how chaotic and confusing and expensive it was last year to pull the election together. So just, just having that knowledge that we can put those questions out there, that people are looking to get those answers for us is just a big shift. So just wanted to say that one more time.
Thank you. Okay, and there's no unfinished business. Is there any new business? I'm sorry, I skipped one. District Community Committee meetings, there's the Audit Committee. Any, anyone have, would like to speak on that? That was March 4th?
I'll just add that we heard from Erin Revolt for the internal audit, which was pretty clean. She gave us a real clean bill of health, minor things that were easily adjustable and fixed. And then I believe we heard from Mr. Buffum about annual risk assessment, the draft presentation for that, and then of the scope of the internal audit.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, with that, any new business? Lisa?
I don't know where this goes, but I wanted to just make a note that several of us attended Senator, am I going to say her name wrong?
Sandra Bok.
Is it Brok? Yeah. Is that how you say it? Okay.
I'd say Brok.
Brok?
Brok. I don't know.
Anyway, but several of us attended her mental health town hall on Wednesday. And I just wanted to make a note that I thought it was a great presentation and there were some students, I don't think there were any Penfield students, but there were secondary students, college-level students. There was a panel, a panel of some mental health experts, and she also forwarded an email of a lot of resources. So I just thought that was really great.
Okay. Thank you.
And since we've talked a lot about mental health tonight.
Yeah.
So, you know, it just, it just illustrates that there is, there's awareness of this issue at all levels.
Yeah, it was well done.
And there's work being done on all levels.
Yeah.
Any additional new business? All right. Thank you. With that, it would be appropriate to have a motion and a second to the meeting be adjourned at 8:51.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion adjourned at 8:51. Thank you.
8:51.